Good morning, DG with directors, all managers. MP Marc Merzul, Block Pendikos, Coritunzi, Staff One. Representing one of the three members of the opposition inside the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, honourable members. Committee consists of seven members, everyone. It got four law government side, more three law opposition, also you, Hareem, Lo Moninga. Thank you, honourable members, by again, law, someone introduce you me. Today, long morning, you may cut Ministry of Trade, more Commerce, only staff, law give him submission, law get a law today, the morning, based law two thousand twenty-four annual report. Before by me proceed, me also, Mr. Jamie, one time tell him, thank you to us, law DG, more team play you, plus have a produce in one report, also me come to parliament and report here. Committee me stand, me scrutinize him, me come with him several issues, and me believe say the day, you come, look there, some issues where committee may be in summon him, you follow him for the past few weeks. So before you may proceed, by me invite them clerk, law, serve facilitate them out, law you everyone, especially if I all guests, Lo Moninga, before by you may proceed long submission today, the morning. Thank you.
Chairman, would you say staff, say take him out? And then me acting DG, law trade. Aye.
Aye.
Joe Ligo. Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chairman, honourable witness, me direct up law cooperative. Aye.
Aye.
Joe Yawko. Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chairman, next witness, me direct up law trade. Aye.
Aye.
Paul Pio. Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chairman, next witness is to choose him, law take him out, by again. Aye.
Aye. Plaza Ros, I sing.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
One more witness, law honor to tourism office, sir. Aye.
Aye, Adela Isakaaru.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
One more witness, me law trade, by again. Next witness, chairman, choose, choose him, law take him out, by again. Aye.
Aye. Sam Reelau.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Private sector, Chamber of Commerce.
Chairman, next witness, me for Chamber of Commerce. Aye.
Aye, Will Mariah Sinumila.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Third year.
Yep.
Next witness, law, third, by again, and then me start choose, so by take him out. Aye.
Aye. Raymond Vuti.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Witness, staff, one time take him out, by again. Aye.
I, Luisa Letlet.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This one. E U law trade. Executive officer, law Ministry of Trade, Alec Berry. Chairman, me executive officer, law Ministry of Trade. Start choose, protect him out, by again. So, aye.
Aye, Alec Berry.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
When I, our witness, by again, when we work with the DG, law trade, so by you start repeating. Aye.
Aye, Ben Joseph.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And more, law trade, law fist, law DG. Aye.
Aye, Jack Lawani.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Swear that the evidence that I shall give.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you to us, you may then thank you, law assistant clerk, law serve a visit, them outlaw this morning. By me invite them, assistant clerk, plus have a leave him room. Thank you, long, today, the morning, you may cut DG with them directors, with them all managers, long, you may law Ministry, law trade, commerce, Nivano to business, where you less have a stop today. Before you may proceed long presentation, long today, the morning, me invite them, you me long, make them, or you me introduce you me, law honourable members, more, I'll view online. Thank you.
Thank you, honourable chairman, law committee, law house, side, law economy, with them foreign policy. Me name, me Joe Ligo, me acting director general, law Ministry of Trade, law six months no more. Thank you.
Thank you, good morning, honourable members, and good morning, Chair, law economic and foreign policy. Me name, me Joe Yawko, and me, me direct up law cooperative, and Nivano to business, and I'm happy to be here this morning.
Good morning, Chair, honourable members. Me name, me, Plaza Ros, I sing. Me acting director, law department, law industry, stuck from six months now.
Good morning, Chair, with them honourable members of parliament, name, me Paul Pio, me director of department, law tourism. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, with them honourable members, law parliamentary committee, law economic, more foreign affairs. Name, me Adela Isakaaru, me chief executive officer, law Vanuatu Tourism Office.
Good morning, Chair, and honourable members of parliament. Name, me Will Mariah Sinumila, General Manager, law Vanuatu Chamber of Commerce and Industries.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, all honourable members, me, Sam Reelau, registered, law Vanuatu Intellectual Property Office. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, honourable members of parliament. Name, me, me Raymond Vuti, me chief executive officer, law Vanuatu Investment Promotion Agency.
Good morning, Chair, and all honourable members of parliament, list up, this morning, name, me Luisa Letlet. Me work also, one manager, law Vanuatu Aid for Trade Management Unit, under the Director General's Office, law Ministry of Trade and Commerce. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, with them all honourable members, play you, me name, me Alec Berry. Me work also, me executive officer, law Ministry of Trade, boss, me DG, law Ministry of Trade. Thank you to us.
Good morning, Chairman, all MPs, me name, me Ben Joseph, we finance manager, law Ministry of Trade, we work with them DG. Thank you.
Good morning, honourable Chair, with them honourable MPs, me name, me Jack, Jack Lawani, me play, I'm the Malakula, and me work, law, as law Director General. Okay, me, me manage, policy planning, or reporting to, by you look, report here, stand law. Thank you.
Thank you to us, acting DG with them directors, more all managers, where you today, the morning, you less have a stop, introduce me fly long this committee. For our convenience, by me ask them, acting DG with them all directors, play you, play you less have a carom seat, way stop, and you meet the other ones, you may save a wait, law, think, Chairman, you made available outside, you may save a wait. Law time, where by, table, you need me follow, and by you less have a come inside, long make them presentation. Thank you. By you may now proceed, long presentation, believe me, long today, or the law, presentation, believe me today, by by, you may give him time, law, acting DG, with them all directors, long presentation, and after the presentation, by all honourable members, you may give him time, law get up, law only save a, ask him question. Law, you meet, and by me give him time, you follow to, plus have a respond, law question, law today, morning, so, me now give him time, law, acting DG, with them team play you, long, so I make him presentation today, the morning. Thank you.
Thank you, honourable Chairman, law House Committee, law Economy, with them Foreign Policy. Thank you, law honourable members, law Parliament, law members, law Committee. Me one privilege, with them one honor, law save appear, law important Committee here. Law me, me appear, law Park Finis, play law, important Committee, law House, law side, law Economy, with them Foreign Policy, me first time, me appear. Thank you, law opportunity, honourable Chairman, with them all distinguished members, law House Committee, law side, law Economy, with them Foreign Policy. Chairman, with them indulgence, more permission, play you. Me, when them give one overview, one overview, law, all functions, with them role, law Ministry of Trade, with them Commerce. Ministry, carom several changes, law lifetime, and recently, only you may put on numbers, in the Ministry of Trade, more Commerce. They under law Ministry, also, you fully aware, me cut nine agencies, everyone, got three statute, three bodies. You look presented, law House, this morning, law Committee, this morning, CEO, law Foreign Investment Promotion Agency, CEO, law Tourism, Vanuatu Tourism Office. And two law side, law Vanaifo, me operate, also, one unit, under law Intellectual Property Office. And Bureau of Standards, too, me staff under law Ministry of Trade, more Commerce. Apart, law that, they got Department, law Cooperatives, Department, law Tourism, Department, law Industries. And, of course, Office, law Minister, with them Corporate Services Unit. Law broader scale, Ministry, me responsible, law implement, them National Trade Policy, law government, with them law country. Individually, under law, under law National Trade Policy, it got all different agencies, where they got own corporate plans, law get a, own business plans, law get a. Only budgeted for, law, only carry out throughout, law, one particular financial year. And honourable Chairman, me want them briefly, tell them all, say no more, before them direction, please, was you give permission, by, me want them briefly, tell them all, say no more, say, what them all task, where only, full town, law responsibility, law agencies, here, only staff under law Ministry of Trade, more Commerce. Me widespread little bit, from instead, law Tourism, Econo Industries, where they deal with them, all Nivano to Business, Econo Cooperatives, Trade, law services, with side, law Tourism. And all challenges, where only faced, law accountability, more reporting, law one financial year, me task with them, all base, law implement them all projects, only staff under law work plan, law get a. All challenges, where only faced, me base, plus have implemented projects, with them, all narrow stakeholders, also Ministry of Finance, Despac, law office, law Prime Minister, some law authorizations, where he must come, law get a. And two law, side, law availability, law funds, more to all, all changes, law government, just law awareness, more information, how committee, no more, Mr. Chairman. Otherwise, me believe say, committee members, he been cut access, law annual report, they look through them, and suppose he all right, Mr. Chairman, by me allow him, me ask him, suppose he all right, by you may move on straight away, law one one directors, give him overview. Law activities, where only carom, last year, them all services, only provide them, also, me staff, law summons, law annual report, law twenty twenty-four, you like, respond him, no come this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, acting DG, law overview, honourable members, by you may give him time, law, all directors, blue, let's have him make him presentation, law get a. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, them, good morning, law you, them, good morning, honourable members. Thing, by me, me talk, talk mainly, law side, law, when them activities, you make them, law side, law cooperative, law last year, just give you, you law one overview. Otherwise, got full up something, by me, I've talked about, and even, law this morning, too, by me, want them, law let them, you less have a, suppose you like, at any specific questions, in regards to cooperative, or Nivano to Business, by me, me appreciate them to us, law, I've seen that questions, more, law answer them. Anyway, I think, law last year, you may cut the priority activities, where, obvious, law cooperative, have been look, look the hand. One, 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 one law people, activities now, have mainly, when you work the hand, law last year, me mainly, law develop, new law policies, law cooperative. Where you been launching, law November, law last year, so, me, me been come, and then it, law component, law side, law administrations, law, obvious, law director, law admin services. Where you look, look, me, me fully integrate them all patches, within the existing program, law planning, believe me, especially towards development, law that, national cooperative policy, where you launch them, law November last year, by land, plus undo. Now, the something, we also, you look, look, have the last year, me mainly, law side, law compliance with the regulatory. Law previous years, where you been come, cooperative, you may been forecast, planned, law development services. But one something, we pay in mind, that one something, where you been missing, planned there, where make them, see question, planned, law downfall, law cooperative, semi compliance. And one law something, and I mean, last year, we strengthen them compliance, believe me, with the regulatory, law line, them with the amendment, law act, where have been done, law year twenty twenty-one. Also, inside law, side, law compliance and regulatory, yeah, you may also look, look, law, I think, submission, you may been go, but so far, you start work, law P S eight. Play you migrate them, one new law department, law Nivano to Business, from currently, me look, look, cooperative, with them Nivano to Business, but Nivano to Business, have one people area. And me now, with them directions, law Ministry, you know, work the hand, and you been complete, them every something, submission, you may cover this. And me like, law mention, them, law place, ever, me want something, where you need them, law, you me everyone, you work for the head, law create them that department. From plant the time, you may find, say, you may cut all disasters, where you stop, go to the hand, you must start cut all cycles, only been staffed, only been staff affected, you me every year. But last year, on number seventeen, December, you may receive that magnitude, at quick, plus seven point three, where me really affect them capital, believe me, so, plant the law, small business, only affected. And me, me one areas, where you must start look, look the hand, so, during the first quarter, law year year, I think, one of something, we be focused, then plant in now, I mean, make sure, see the business, only come back to normal. Also, you may look, look, law side, law training, and marketing, and information technology, with the research, law side, law cooperative. One of something, have me mainly, law you may, also strengthen them, one of something, you less have a, I mean, please strengthen them, cooperative educational systems, believe me, law make sure, see, have a going set, law curriculum. So, so last year, you may been work with the F Q A, law make sure, your training modules, believe me, I created, under the F Q A. And now, you must start work with them, auto level Ministry of Educations. From plant the time, we find them out, here, all students, believe me, all drop outs, believe me, or live in this law, some live in this, you yet then, still look, back, law community, but no more, cut only, and you, by you call, you look, look at us, yeah. And then you start, law name, more at us, some, law language, with the team, start, law name, more at a land. But what have we credit for them, so, so you look, look, law syllabus, believe you me, you mean, you mean it, law start them, from, law put on some business mindset, law junior secondary level, so we less start look, look, law, the, the medications, law, look, look, suppose, eh, business, training basics, believe you may save, put on two, inside, law syllabus, believe me, through law formal educations. Also, you may also look, look, law, you must start work now, with them, through the, me, you must also, you must start work, we must establish one, management information systems. Where management information system, here, law make sure, see, registrations, will cooperative, believe me, renewal, will cooperative, believe me, have follow, eh, eh, you may rather, simply, have follow, eh, Vanuatu Business Calendar. Where, by me, see, mark, or see, me come in, law thirty, first ox, every business, only should cut, on cooperative business, only should make sure that all registrations, believe them, renew. So, and also, not only to that, by you, all M I S, management information system, see, want them capture them, every member, inside, law one particular cooperative, and that member, same in four, law on them. When them can produce now, I may cut, law so that you may have a help, me have from. Principle number three, law cooperative, I may talk about members' economic participations. So, it's not only, believe you establish some cooperative, but by you also, look, look, law members. You plus strengthen them all members, and you may save us, eh, seventy-five percent, law total populations, law, you reside, law rural areas, and only involve plant, the law side, law farming. And, want them, law tell them, you may see, at all kind people, believe me, now, you must start, take it, more at a, plant the time, you may talk about, talk at a, no, but you may no go, law, look, look, individual, is here, one, one persons, have me cut one of them. Plant the time, you may talk in general, no more, you may talk about agriculture, in general, you may talk about cooperative, in general. What them, one name, I've less start, law work, them last year, have me, law build them up, that M I S, management information systems, law cooperative, where you may capture them. Also, all members, with them all number, display members, so that the future, by no got any, any complaints, or any matters, where me arise, suppose you got one incident, have me happen, law on members. where have me arise, suppose you got one incident, have me happen, law on members. And also, we will look look the side law business support services, where, look look, especially, where you may help them, more, that plant the law people, through law, real development bank, you me, or development bank, you me, I think, plant the law, business, you me, literature knowledge, blow that, I mean, very low, you make them see full up, that, I think, one of the extra services, we must have provided, more, the, the, especially throughout the six province, and we, assistance, all men, all individual, the side law agriculture business, blow, develop them all business plan, blow that, blow make sure, say, blow meet them criteria, not only the real development bank, but also the law, law commissions banks, you me, and not only do that, we also, you may come up, blow help them, more, that, the side law, loan repayments, blow calculate them, loan repayments, blow that, blow make sure that, full up, that, only, only number three, system, you me. Also, you may also look look to, blow, one of the priorities, something to, where you must have work Liam, I think, to do, have look, I mean, I must have, run ahead, where then, you may, you may come up, where then, doing, blow, make sure that, you may accommodate them, but try and look look, blow facilitate them trade, law, agricultural produce, you me, that is why, I know, I look Ministry of Trade, I mean, the, I must have, the name, blow make sure, see, you may got all pack house, the islands, you me, so first pack house, who have been building, and me, the area, of varnoto cooperative business network, and, but you got, full up, the regularities, Liam, where you must have, you may fix symphors, you may need, make sure that, on produce, law island, you build them up cash, law, law areas, through law, comparative advantage, where one, one people, you may look at law rural areas, all islands, you me, so I think, I know, I mean, some something, when you want them, blow me tell them, but otherwise, law last year, you may restore two, twenty new cooperative spark, and will come on boat, so, currently, we want them, blow tell them, you me, see, you may got, four hundred and thirty four active cooperative, who is that draw, law country, start, you guys, and one, I tell, where you must have provided services, you call, that, thank you Thomas.
Thank you, Director, law presentation, law, long, today, the morning, Director of Cooperative, we may move, ulanarla, Director, blow make him presentation, thank you.
Good morning, back again, law, you may everyone, Chair, with them all members, me Director of Department of Tourism, under the Ministry of Trade and Commerce, small quick presentation, no more, law role, me follow also, Department of Tourism, within law, institution, blow you me, law trade and commerce, me follow, me look look, the side law policy and regulation, law tourism sector, law Vanuatu, so, under the Department of Tourism, you may took out four different programs, one, in the policy and planning, we start under law leadership, law director, then you may took out product development, where have now, look look, the side, how business support, you may provide them, equal on businesses, in terms of upgrades or infrastructure refurbishments, etc., then you may took out also standard, or the accreditation, so, get out of look, the side, issue more permits, equal tourism businesses, different classification, law tourism operators, you got accommodation to operators, etc., then you may took out, or get out of the side, law investment, you took out one investment division, where you look look, law new businesses, where you wish, wish, place established, law Vanuatu, or same time, to all businesses, where you stop, law Vanuatu, but only want them upgrade, or you want them expand, investment, blow that, then you may took out, last one, where me Outer Islands Division, blow me follow, where have me look look, law six, follow offices, blow me follow, law each, at quarter, law province, law Vanuatu, so, Department of Tourism, we may got one representation, inside law one one provincial government, where we also support them PTA, or TAC, Technical Advisory Committee, inside law one one province, where we support them SG, more President, law Provincial Government. You may to the Department of Tourism, you may got about twenty two staff, most of them only stop law EFAT, where have me head office, then you may allocate them to, at least, with public service, and me save a approval, place stop law one one island, one manager, with them one product development officer, or one business development officer, depending law context, law each island or destination. Law twenty twenty four, we will have been able, law share and report, he come back, law Public Service Commission, most same time, he come back, law you me, law Parliament, thank you Thomas, where you like, have a take him time, blow review him report, yeah, also, you may one is have a tourism, in me one sector, where have me quite complex, you may the Department of Tourism, you know, look look, no more, law one specific sector, may be a bit different from other departments, we follow, look look, law air, land transport, what they maritime, so you may mask, cater law each of those segments, yeah, but make sure, say tourism, and me save a drive, more, and me save a grow. Last year, a lot of efforts, blow me follow, the side, law product development, me like launch him, one, and me like call him tourism business recovery program, TBRP, where you may to say, support them over hundred and eighty eight selected, and eligible businesses, where he been applied from Vanuatu government grant, yeah, where he provide them, equal that, as a Director of Department of Tourism, me take him time, yeah, too, plus have a want them apologize, equal all operators, where have even taken time, but we realize have a really simple funding, he come true, I think, you must have, what the Ministry of Finance, me follow, I've been providing all the data and applications, equal to Ministry of Finance, but what them situation, financial situation, blow you me, we save a law, law country, especially law government, and may not been easy, but really simple funding, I go on time, law operators, where at least up, one day, need, receiving my support, where you may been promising, law that, I think, number two, me will I also, work planned there, with them, the side, law investment, you may last year, you may to support them over hundred businesses, where you may be, provide them all, that are duty exemptions, full up, all businesses after law post Covid, more time, law recovery, law earthquake, or have been applied from duty exemption, he come law government, so that they can import materials, nor renovate them business, blow that, or sometimes, some of amenities, no more, inside law business, blow that, but make sure, say, visitors, where me come, make stop them, or that, is have experience, same one, unforgettable moment, or same time, too, and we got all amenities, where we expect them, blow look him, so I mean, is the side law investment, me will I also support them some new businesses, where he express them interest, blow that, blow come, law Vanuatu, you may took out, Mativulu project, law Santo, you may took out also, Lelepa project, law EFAT, more, you must have also, look look, law larvala businesses, or investment opportunities, we save a law islands, last year, you may been work planned there, with the Ministry of Internal Affairs, through law task force, law township, also developing some concept notes, the support them township, Law Havana, where you may be proposed, same time, to the now, Neban, law Santo, Department of Tourism, you may put them on paper, I come, the council of ministers, where me consider them, but seeking some funding support, on how to establish that township, and me also cover them sector of tourism, from you say, you may save a tourism, and me one economic multiplier, or by me save a generate them, full up job employment opportunities, but same time, too, business activities, and me save a boost, he come on that, so I mean, the side law investment, the side law accreditation, you may make them compliance and verification, and Mr. Co, sometime, you like, make them all audit, the twenty twenty four, you may launch him, one, and you like call him, one national audit study, check him good standard, law tourism, law across law provinces, you me, we like been work planned there, with environment skills partnership, with environment tourism office, where you may got all, at least, all office, we stop law island, but is have a provide them data, have me come back, data where have me come back, and me show him, say, tourism sector, we need him plan the help, the side law product, upgrade, he come on that, what them situation, where we've been facing law Covid, and then, Evernoatu, where I mean, no save a provide them, one reliable flight connectivity, most stable schedule, you make them so full up businesses, only suffer, I mean, no one surprise, law full up, we may establish, you may, each one of me, been experience them inconvenience, time, where we may try, book him one flight, block all, and we make them, say, me also impact them international visitors, where you want them come, block all Outer Islands, as of law statistics, we want to bureau statistics, and we provide them, I come back, you me, the ministry, and me look him, say, full up law tourism opportunities, and me only focus planned in now, of EFAT, so, work, we will allow the Department of Tourism, and we will look him, and try, establish some partnership with them all stakeholders, but how now, I mean, save a, add lock them potential, see, law tourism, is have a go back, law, all island, you me. And I, me take him, you to come, the Department of Tourism, and me also, look look, the side, law, full up work, we like make him last year, we also had aviation, with them cruise ship, under law aviation, me will I work planned there, with them Evernoatu, more, Vanuatu Tourism Office, with the Mapos Vanuatu, but look him proposal, block out one domestic aviation solution, what them Fiji, where is, where I may come, I think, full up, we will I been reading some media statements, and we come out, unfortunately, proposal, believe me, no go through, but at least, me like, try and make him plan the work, law support them international connectivity, and we come back, today, you took out eight international airlines, where he servicing, come back, law Vanuatu, you make them see, bringing back numbers, he come, last year, you may to have been achieving, big numbers, you me, also, benchmark, we start for two thousand nineteen, Vanuatu, and we receive him number fifty nine thousand air visitors, and we come, and we still below two thousand nineteen level, where I mean, benchmark, where you me, law tourism, you be using, also, best year, law tourism, law Vanuatu, in contrast, me will I support them plant, the side, law cruise ship, so, cruise ship arrivals, visited numbers, for last year, me about two hundred and four thousand passengers, where he come, law Vanuatu, I mean, I call under the three different segments, he got all large cruise ships, where you like, save a look, he start come, the port villa, but he got also expedition ships, or all yachts, where I mean, get a nice, top go, plant in all remote islands, you me, I think, I mean, give him, you may know, same one overview, the side, law statistics, the side, law policy and planning, we will I saw, stand try, and re looking back, back again, tourism accreditation framework, blow me follow, how you must have classify, more tourism products, law Vanuatu, for you may took out one big number of law, different sectors, segments, inside law tourism sector, how now, you may save a streamline and process, blow that, and facilitate them to online application, or renewal of the tourism permit, so that we can digitalize. I think, by me no go Thomas, law, I mean, I allow him flow, let me save a ask him question later on, but me tell him, thank you Thomas, the Chair, with the members.
Okay, thank you Thomas, Director of Law Tourism, let me give him time law, another of the service, address of me, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, Acting Director of Department of Industry, Mr. Lassar Asasi.
Thank you, thank you Chair, thank you, honorable members, please have a give him time, for Department of Industry, under the Ministry of Trade and Commerce, please have a come, give us more briefing, no matter, you know, by me, give us more brief, full up something, establish law, law report, we stop, before we start the Department of Industry, I mean, I mean, I start no more, law two thousand eleven, I mean, one new department, where, government, I mean, I mean, TV, I mean, government, I mean, set up a basically, I believe, look look, the side, the failure, the China, where manufacturing sector, believe me, law, law Vanuatu, that's why, Department, I mean, I mean, set up for, under the Department, he got several divisions, one, I mean, the side, law policy and planning, where me Administrative Act, Development Act, number nineteen of two thousand fourteen, then, also, you may cut one division, and then, where I mean, the side, the manufacturing section, manufacturing sector, and creative industry, I mean, I mean, previously, I mean, blow, giving permit, equal on industry, and, two thousand, two thousand eighteen, government decided that, you may take, creative industry, come inside the Department, creative industry, you may look look, the side, landcraft, come and text, and music, recently, you may take him, shake it, he come, for Department, I mean, save a, look Liam, we may save a program, all industries, from, you may like, say, all industries, all the important industries, where is a program, economic premier, and on the part, the contribution, equal economy, and you may also, you may got one division, the side, the marketing and promotion, promote them for not to make, I think, by me, go full up, I think, by law, twenty three, or twenty, twenty six September, by me got for not to make a week, where by me do full up product, we may, we establish itself, and establish so, so the Department, I mean, look look, the side, the marketing, and promotion, for not to make, domestic, or internationally, and also, you may got one division, the side, blow research and development, where he provide them all trainings, the side, the failure, the China, I mean, what them all, not a stake holders, believe me, or lengthy, blow provide them all trainings, to la, especially, to la, all clients, believe me, more so, law, property, failure, the China, you may catch some trainings, all islands, the province, believe me, the side, the failure, the China, full up, all the mama, and only inform them, and also, you may got all offices, believe me, all the provinces, you may got law, six, all the provinces, Department of Industry, I mean, got, I mean, got about thirty seven staffs, no more, where you must have a work Liam, I think, some, we will, work, we must have make them, I mean, since last time, come on, you put them up, full up, business, or set up production, so, Department, I must have a facility, they may all, all, all supports, where government, I mean, give him, law, crew and industry, believe me, especially, the side, the manufacturing sectors, creative industry, and music, but them last year, I think, last time, you like, at one support, where he come through, law ISF, industrial support, human fund, where you may roll them out, I mean, one amount, thirty eight millions, and you may give me call, about twenty clients, or support, we may give him go, I mean, especially, that, where he all got all industrial permit, you may register them all, UEA, Jamandal Act, you will do in one business, the failure, this, and you must be registered, you must get one industrial permit, then they got one industrial permit, and it's a very small, last support, he come, and also, you me, what develop, I mean, I must have, put develop export strategy, believe me, I think, not this, by me launch him, for not to make week, I believe, look look, the side, more, the side, export, I you make out the anti-graft policy, where you must have implemented them, you make at national music policy, we must have implemented them too, and also, you may got all, I mean, must have work with them, I mean, must have, work with them, all stakeholders, believe me, blow crew, my industry, believe me, at all support, on technical assistance, or staff, or list, or list, provider, so I think, by me give us more, by me quick no more, but then, by me, that, and flow, plus, you may got the more questions, please answer, thank you.
Thank you Thomas, Acting Director of Long Industry, let me give him back time law, acting DG.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, suppose he all right with him, you may got three well, CEOs, law, foreign investment, with them Chamber of Commerce, more tourism office, only stopped, suppose, right, blow they present them all brief overviews, law, operations, blow that, law twenty twenty four.
Thank you, all honorable members, but you may give him time law, all CEOs, blow they have a, give him presentation, blow, I think, for time constraint, but you may let me team, all overview, for, let's say, ten to fifteen minutes, thank you.
Thank you Chairman, suppose he all right, he must have, with them Chief Executive, Law Foreign Investment Promotion Agency, thank you.
Thank, thank you DG, good morning, everyone, okay, I mean, I mean, one overview, blow all activities, where Foreign Investment Promotion Agency, have been undertaken, law last year, law twenty twenty four, VIPA, also, where you will save a, I mean, one agency, where I mean, stop, blow promote them, or at the same time, I mean, regulate them, every foreign investment, where he come inside law country, okay, the last year, last year, you may able, blow you may register them, two hundred and twenty seven foreign investments altogether, okay, I mean, I mean, showing one decline, small decline, compared to previous year, where I mean, follow them global trend, the side, law investment, you may been also facilitate them, blow renewing, or receiving all annual reports, blowing all existing investments, where he stop, law Vanuatu, what they will be, can you be able, blow you may facilitate them over nine hundred businesses, where only foreign owned, where only operate law, law villa, all of Vanuatu, throughout, okay, what them, what them all existing investments, where you may cut, yeah, every foreign investment, where you may cut, yeah, only able, blow only generate them, only offer them more than nine thousand jobs, law, you me, law, law Vanuatu. One long, all that, role, or task, where we will I be, make him to, I mean, the side, law promotion, more, you may facilitate him investment, also, where you may save a VIPA, I mean, not really got that much money, blow by I mean, go, undertake more aggressive promotion, more, advertise means overseas, so we will I work planned there, with them all trade, with them all strategic partners, believe me, also, my Pacific Trade and Invest, Pacific Island Center, play, me facilitate them investment, he come, law Vanuatu, classic example, by I mean, you may look him, the next, the next week, by VIPA, I mean, co-host them on a forum, blow please, with them Pacific Island Center, like Japan, result, law, all collaborations, believe me, yeah, you may able, you may attract them over thirty businesses, law Japan, blow by, only come, the next week, so, I mean, I mean, one example, law, facilitation work, where you must have, making, with them all partners, believe me, one long, all role, you may be undertaken, I mean, you may provide them all aftercare service, with them advocacy, aftercare, you must have, visiting, all investments, where you meeting, say, I mean, now, only very important, or blow, like, impact, law, you may, the side, law economy, as a whole, so you must have, visiting, work with them, all get, together with them, all government departments, believe me, for example, sign of hand, I mean, one example, where we will I work with them, try and, make him, by I mean, I'm not planned, I'm long time, custom now, the side, law advocacy, main thing, thing, and we want them contribute, blow you me, enhance them investment, environment, believe me, law, law Vanuatu, I mean, I mean, work planned there, I mean, I mean, look him, one, VIPA, I mean, able, by, by, I mean, come, one long, get a first agency, blow by I mean, come, one fully automated agency, the side, law online registration, and number two, based long experience, yeah, VIPA, I mean, take him leave, blow by, I mean, drive him, think thing, blow by, I mean, got one stop shop, think you will I be no well, Liam, and then, number three, we will I able, law, undertake review, long all reserved, with them restricted list, with them, think things, say, okay, you may make him, show himself, one or two, I mean, open, more, I mean, allow one fair, more balanced, business competition, law Vanuatu, I think, I mean, thank you DG.
Thank you Thomas, you may give him time law, CEO.
Good morning, back and Chair, I think, also, CEO. Good morning, I can share, I think also CEO of Low Vanuatu Tourism Office, me tell him thank you, opportunity to provide them some quick updates, no more, but me compliment them, one of them director of Department of Tourism, me been highlight them, low overview play him, me been tell them how to work with Department of Tourism, me make them, or same department were responsible, blow sector, work Low Vanuatu Tourism Office, since you make one amendment, act of two thousand seven, me been outlining, say work from me, by focus for destination marketing, no more, so, main role of Low Vanuatu Tourism Office, I me play make him promotion, my marketing efforts, low internationally, believe me attract them more international visitors, they come in Low Vanuatu, just plug in one small background, no more office, and me set up on nineteen eighty two, custom today, we've like at over low twenty five staff members, and we've like at five programs everyone, first program, you make at program for corporate services, where me also Chief Executive Officer, me look out them office, and me look out them team, blood administration blow office, second program, and me short hall markets, where we look at them all three of lucky tourism markets, believe me, and me market blow Australia, market blow New Zealand, with the market blow New Caledonia, number three program, and me look look low long haul tourism markets, and me, me look look low get the emerging markets, believe me, where they stop long way, with them all short hall markets, believe me, so you look look low market, Europe, North America, with them Asia, and you may also make them some work, lose side blow domestic market, since we COVID, been custom you may low two thousand twenty, and so, me value expand them role, the program, yeah, blow look look to low domestic market, number three program, and me digital strategy, more communications, from work, blow marketing, and me involve and plant the use, blow technology, that you talk about their website, believe me promote them Vanuatu, low international visitors, more increase in communication, blow work, you may make them, program, and me look look specifically, low hemi, number four program, you may look look low business intelligence, work from me, believe me guided by a number of market research work, where you may undertake them, we like car, might plant the survey, low international airport, as well as overseas, believe me, guide them all investment, where obviously must make them low market, hemi, now, hemi all get the key programs, blow office, now two thousand twenty four, I think by you value look in base, look copy, blow annual report, the ministry, blow trade, more commerce, you provide them, by him, you know, really reflect them, tourism office, and we make them, only because ministry, and we combine them, report plan, based low, one M information, and we provide it specifically, lose side blow government department, time you look look, come low state three bodies, me value provide them copies, blow report, believe me, value, and me come, time minister, believe me, or minister, blow trade, and me table them, report, believe me, value separately, and me come back low National Parliament, me want to give some two thousand twenty four highlights, no more, I think you may look him the two thousand twenty three, time we borders, Low Vanuatu, and we open back in, and we low July twenty twenty two, total visitor arrivals, low time, I think you may just reach him over low twenty five thousand visitors, that you step in equal two thousand twenty three, and me one big fly increase, blow visitor arrival numbers, you may custom over low seventy five thousand international visitors, and make at one growth, blow colors up, forty five percent blow growth, where you look him say, he got confidence, and tourism, we continue, believe me, start comeback, why, because, time you look look low two thousand twenty, custom twenty twenty two, borders, believe me, they have me close, he got so much demand, blow visitors after COVID, and you want them travel, so you make him say, two thousand twenty two, you may not achieve him, but two thousand twenty three, you may start achieve him, unfortunately, demand, yeah, where you may expect them, believe me, look him the twenty twenty four, believe me, make him the recovery, blow tourism, and we continue, you may not save achieving, because he got liquidation, Low National Airline, believe me, even one two, low money, spread May two thousand twenty four, me value, you know, time finish, by him, he got possible challenges, international connectivity, with them National Airlines, starting the December two thousand twenty three, and me value be in true low crisis aviation task force, where we been set up under the Ministry of Trade, more commerce, you may been inform them, government, through low Prime Minister's Office, say, and make at one issue, stop come out near low market, and make at one where you tell us a cross selling, it mean him say, all wholesaler, all trade partners, believe me internationally, only knock out confidence, low you me, because they got all issues, plus setback, time you look him, the National Airline, by me got one issue, time we come custom may, and we got liquidation, you make him say, you know, cut one international air carrier, believe give him confidence, low wholesalers, probably sales, automatically, by looking two thousand twenty four visitor arrivals, and we drop one time, you may drop, become down, or just over fifty thousand visitor arrivals, work from me, value Low Vanuatu Tourism Office, together with the Department of Tourism, by me always use on two thousand nineteen, also one benchmark, yeah, blow tourism, Low Vanuatu, and suppose you talk talk with them, plant the tourism operators, by they confirm, they use the two thousand nineteen, and we want all best, yeah, blow get that, because visitor arrivals, not only me good, but value of spend, and me also good, low get that, that you make custom to two thousand twenty five, me glad, but tell them, say, with them, report with study six, Bureau of Study six releasing, blow last seven months, you look him, so you got over fifty thousand visitor arrivals, finish, they come inside the country, and me make him confident, say you must have recover, why, you got international connectivity, blow all narvla major airline carriers, also Jetstar, Virgin Australia, Qantas, Solomon Airlines, with them Fiji Airways, with them Air Caledony, where they fly, come inside low country, with them regular flights, where they make them, daily, and we come inside low country, you may look him, support Villa Tourism Industry, and me recover, you may look him Santa Tourism Industry, and we recover, but not as frequent, low recovery rate, also in Port Villa, challenges, also in direct, blow tourism, and me highlight them, and me domestic connectivity, and we like class, say, government, it continue, blow find them solutions, blow address them domestic connectivity, by me secular them, one list, blow some all tourism information, believe me, no more, you can, believe you value save note them, but chairman with them committee members, I think by me take him same, hemi, one small overview, no more, where we provide them, allow me value save, ask him more questions, thank you Thomas.
Thank you, CEO of Long Tourism, thank you, give him time Lo DG.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, you make at registrar, blow, intellectual property office, fully responsible, low trademarks, with them on copyright, all issues, also protection, blow copyright, with them on trademarks, blow business, Low Vanuatu, and we stop blow place here, by depend low timing, believe me, Honorable Chairman, with them two CEO, Low Vanuatu Bureau, blow standards, to stop outside, stop asking whether fine, you need, believe me, come inside, and me unfortunately, got some issues, where you blow sort them out, you know, been, he been out, believe me, while me like stop wait, blow come in, but, me like all no honorable discretion, believe you, Mr. Chairman, was he all right, you make at registrar, blow, intellectual property office, probably there, where responsible, low trademarks, blow business, Low Vanuatu, was he me want them remember, an area important issue, was the deal with them, lose side, blow cover, low regional, with them global level, more one bill, where blow come, no place here, stop blow discretion, believe you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Thank you, long purpose, blow this discussion, you could you make at, hem two, save me make him presentation, low morning, yeah, more with them CEO, blow pure more standard, hem two, but you may give him time, hem blow, hem save me make him overview presentation, hem long today morning, but you may allow him time, and also me tell him finish, with them time constraint, I think by you may presentation, believe me, but by me maximum long, let's say fifteen minutes, ten to fifteen minutes, thank you, Acting DG.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, by, make him low CEO, Low Vanaipo, keep him short, on main activities, blow twenty twenty four, and then by Mr. Chairman, Honorable Chairman, CEO, Low VBS, I mean, I take a mouth, believe me, this was in it, blow, and me talk talk, by take a mouth, last time, thank you, sir.
Thank you, you may give him time law, CEO, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, by me talking brief, no more, by term of some say status, blow from what intellectual property office, and me still one unit, one unit under the CSU, under the DG, obviously established, two thousand and eleven, since seven oh two, I've been joining World Trade Organization, and requirement, blow, obviously must establish, blow protect them, or goods and services, for foreign clients, with them all local entrepreneurs, believe me, Low Vanuatu. Mission, blow office, also you may save good IP, and me form foundation, blow economy, blow one country, and we can, believe me, chrome economy, place what that, you make at one balance, a public, more private interest, protection, and me play, and me, and me go across the board, more important to, believe you may contribute, believe me advocate, more protect them, more trust and knowledge, and expression of culture, where me asset, to me all month, Vanuatu. Obviously, me cut fifteen staff, you may implement them roughly around eight, eight intellectual property laws, trademark act, to do with them science, logos, low one product services, design, designs act, patents act, second layout, trade secret, chocolate indication, with them for not corporate management society, through the last policy, blow cahman, you been to, think them lot, where we, with them lawyer, blow check ethical indication, where protect them friends, why, no more, and cahman, through low past, cahman, I've been approve, policy finish, believe me, continue, blow work, low one issue, low bargain, or call them suit, and rest, low G I, blow protect them some, low this product, believe me, where, or come out, the different province, just believe me, where salt climate, if play plant a low, reputation, believe me, low market, one, I mean, now, one big issue is our cover, cover low, for now, two, we got different noble varieties, and you may save, say, pass the kind of forum, to stop pick up, believe me, is all discuss them, but for the national interest, you may go, they protect them, cover, believe me, stand, we will miss a call, discuss them all, think them, which are the original, what them, low international. For the last division, no more, obviously, me got three division, no more, first one, I mean, admin, what them support services, number two, I mean, to do with them registration, that's all main activity, registration of all production service, under the different IP laws, global trademark, global patent and design, and last one, I mean, to do with them, policy initiative, development, under low, especially. By term of most, say, for the past, for the last years, for last year, obviously, me continue, by term of most, say, obviously, me continue, blow generate them revenue, direct revenue come through low, main operation, where me legal history, all different IP laws, where obviously, me administrate them, for the last year, obviously, through low revenue, you may collect them forty five million through low registration, that's foreign clients, and all local entrepreneurs, believe me, towards the cahman, the plant telephone, not to make week, for level, come to understand the importance, IP, or come to protect them, or protect, blow get that, before he start sell out the whole market, and as you may look for, the last year, too, you been cut, start them, you been set one registration, low copyright, copyright, and one low way, and one automatic right, where and protect them, one artist, one musician, one writer, one painter, but you tell them thank you, cahman, through the policy consideration, you been admit them lawyer, believe me, give him some legal protection, too, from one automatic right, and believe me, allowing for registration service, and me glad, but tell them, say, last year, you may start to doing registration, blow all, all, by term of most, so all creative industries, believe me, within front, because those are our strength, low, Low Vanuatu, especially low local people, believe me, all indigenous, anti-graft, low anything, painting, or they come, have importance, blow registration, because to do with the one, our activity, believe me, you know, say, blow registration, no more, but I mean, call out, to plan the awareness, because I mean, talk about intellectual property, I mean, still one concept, Low Vanuatu, and you could, blow story, and them awareness, obviously, when you look at the less planting, what them, relevant, what is, probably, my awareness, place what that, or library, Lucia, you protect them, not only the foreigners, but local entrepreneurs, too, and library, tell them, law, committee, that, for level, local entrepreneurs, believe me, or can understand them, and can, or can, they block, and register them all, product, or get what them services, and one part, to blow this role, and me blow, to do, to legislative assistance, with the policy engagements, with them international cooperation, with them, because IP, I mean, one complex area, and obviously, continue, blow walk about, advocate, through the World Intellectual Property Organization, we want special, like one agency, and so last them, last, the plan, Philip, put on the plan, believe me, redefine some IP treaties, blow allow him, or local entrepreneurs, believe me, or protect them, or protect, get overseas, through the one signal of registration, and me, I mean, still ongoing, and by term of most, say, tell the policy, the table ready, blow, I mean, call the Parliament, look at times to what export market, and suppose all value, what is, believe me, low local entrepreneurs, or can, believe me, work, protect and services, and the one we export, we obviously, although, she now, in class, tradition, by facilitate them, low low trademark, low low patent, what it, what them new invention, and low low design, and by me no go in brief, obviously, me still grow, it can plan the work, believe me, game, tell them thank you, to low, obviously, DG, only problem, new structure, blow, obviously, me continue, problem, believe more staff, it can plan the work, but those are just brief, no more, for any question, you cut everything, say, low report, me, always welcome, low answer many question, thank you.
Thank you, CEO of Long Intellectual Property, give him time Lo DG.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, was he all right with him, you permission, believe you, by me, cost rate, low Chief Executive, blow Bureau, blow standards, and me one unit where important, he stop command up now, yeah, especially with them, strong direction, blow government, no, you may try, my, to verify, I mean, economy, believe me, with them import substitution, low deal, with them more parkhouses, more, ensure them standards compliance, low standards, believe me, low international, regional, more, low national level, so, see all right with him, Chairman, by me, give him one very brief overview, low activities, low twenty twenty four, no more, by me ask him, low CEO, Low VBS, was he all right, Mr. Chairman, believe me, give one overview, low you me, thank you.
Thank you, DG, before by you may take him, CEO, Low Pirmostandet, I think I mean, no make him, conduct them all, believe me, but while Secretary, he facilitating, remember, by me ask him first time, suppose he got any narvla CEOs, where, I think say, me, potent, blow by him, he make a presentation, believe, I am there in the morning, I think he could believe me proceed, while Secretary, to organize him all, low CEO, Long Pirmostandet.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, you make at Chief Executive, sorry, General Manager, Low, Honorable Chamber of Commerce, more industry, where me newly, just newly appointed last week, I think, so, was say, me been brief finish, low overview, blow activities, blow last year, by me ask him, was he all right, Mr. Chairman, make him one brief overview, low activities, blow last year, no more, thank you.
Thank you, you may give him time law, General Manager.
Thank you, Thomas, low opportunity, blow presented there, yes, this is the week two, week two, as General Manager, blow VCCI, but I mean, one great opportunity, blow me save, talk about, one and now, Chamber, I mean, make him low twenty twenty four, suppose he may not aware, VCCI, I mean, got five key result areas, where we value focus for him, believe me, save, engage with them government firstly, with them another stakeholders on behalf of private sector, secondly, blow help in private sector, blow, I mean, become more resilient, number three, I mean, blow provide them reliable information, more advice to all businesses, blow government, with them, all another stakeholders, number four, blow provide them inclusive business skills development, low all SME, with, all get the, will you hold them business licenses, more finally, blow support them national skills development, more access, blow MSMEs, blow investor, they come, low country, believe me, you may cut two offices at the moment, basically, place of the Port Villa, Moanu Santo, all services, where we provide them, I call low, efate, with them Tana, my, low every province is, believe me, low, Low Vanuatu, and the last day, I've been providing services, you call a five, four thousand participants throughout the six provinces, so reach, believe me, I mean, normal, low Port Villa, by me outside, low Port Villa as well, me like at the donor partners, believe me, where, and main stakeholders, believe me, now, I mean, low Department of Industry, Department of Corporatives, Vanuatu Aid Management Unit, Department of External Trade, Department of Public Works, Department of Tourism, Agriculture, Labor, and the Vanuatu Tourism Office, me want them take him attention, believe me, since you make at very short time, believe me, present, equal low, range of workshops, where we value also provide them low grassroots, believe me, which you may think say, me very important, I mean, value believe, Thomas, say, at the moment, perception, blow VCCI, I mean, that, I mean, engage the private sector, mainly all investors, where they come into country, but me value also, make them full out work, with developing more skills, blow all businesses, where they stop low outer islands, all basic skills, entrepreneurship, low employees, employees, more across low different industries, lose side, blow EDF, me value, support them implementation, blow Industry Development Fund, the EDF eleven, low behalf, blow Department of Industries, Low Santo, more like efate, more, me value help them twenty nine businesses across the four provinces. VCCI, I mean, offering business development course, low, also me mention them, low different stakeholders, including more grassroots, for skills development, coaching and mentoring programs, with them all entrepreneurs, are basically all, one place, where only really interest, plus I will start them up on business, we value provide them more skills, offer them more business skills development, we value address them to all growing skills gap, where we experience in the private sector, you may find them, say, me difficult, we find them right staff, especially, we talk about all financial statements, how you may say, present a one business plan, we value also offer them all, all training, lose side there, the twenty twenty four, we value help them, blow host them national forum, national business forum, where you make them together, all different speakers, low region, where we focus them, low Vanuatu, some more questions, we've been discussing, not time, yeah, I mean, about developing workforce, believe me, how name, I say, addressing skills gap, where we affect them really across industry sector, how you say, grow in Vanuatu, investment, low you may low businesses, Low Vanuatu, how I mean, say, encourage him, all investors, blow come, low invest the country. Encourage him, all investors, block calm, blow invest the country. Um, how now, you may say, improve them, um, ease, we make them business, also, the cost of doing business, which I mean, one real issue, the private sector. Potential blow export, you may say, we see a potential, blow, uh, local manufacturing of goods or products. Um, how now, you may say, uh, one of me minute, please me focus them. More how now, you may say, we help, blow, build them some more accessible export markets. Tourism, key infrastructure and job creation. Uh, one kind of infrastructure now, you may need, believe me, invest them, we make them, say, create them, even not to jobs, but also, we attract them. Um, external, um, investors, believe they come, blow, invest into tourism, especially after the earthquake. We also provide them support, law, public works, M I P O. Um, in terms of providing, um, support, law, how you may say, recover after the earthquake, believe me, the December, the last year. Maybe just in brief, key statistics, blow, uh, you mean. Just excuse me. Total workshops, where we play around the twenty twenty four, I mean, double. Uh, across the six provinces, you may provide a one hundred and eighty workshops, law four thousand, um, participants. And, um. You may focus, law grassroots financial management, including pricing, invoicing, profit and loss. It may sound very basic, believe me, the room, but I think full up, believe me, all, um, businesses, outer islands, only need them specific skills, yeah. We will always stand ready, but support them, uh, government in partnership with them on private sector and other key stakeholders, blow. Um, promote them, uh, good business practices. And also, uh, from my perspective, from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. We building one stronger relationship with them, uh, government, or departments and ministries, well involved, especially, blow engaging more private sector. Increase them, uh, more improve them strong collaboration. Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you. General manager, long, uh, brief overview. Before you meet, I came, CEO, long, uh, Pirmo standard, I mean, invite him, him, long, come forward, long, take him out. By, um, me, ask him, uh, clock. Ask him clock, long, uh, I mean, come forward, long, um, facilitate them, uh, out, blow, CEO, the Pirmo standard.
Me?
Me? Athanas, be with the?
Promise, lo, name long God.
Promise, lo, name long God.
Say every talk, talk, we're by me, tell them.
Say every talk, talk, we're by me, tell them.
Long committee, long parliament, yeah?
Long committee, long parliament, yeah?
Only on true talk, talk.
Only on true talk, talk.
On true talk, talk, everyone.
On true talk, talk, everyone.
Please God help me.
Please God help me.
Thank you, you may tell them, thank you, long, uh, clap, who save a facilitate them, uh, out, blow CEO, the Pirmo standard. So now, you may give him time, law, CEO, long, you say. Give him a brief overview, love you, me, this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, chair. Thank you, committee. Thank you, T G, and team, believe me, for the good. I think briefly, I want to be of standards, I mean, one study, the body, establish law act number fourteen, law two thousand sixteen. And mainly, also, I'm, uh, name, law, if she stand, I mean, stand for standards. You may look through the standards and obviously, I've been come to set them up from. As you me, co, I think, I'll call it, call it, tell them, you need, you must say, ratify more international law. Same W T O, and you got all requirement for trade. And as you want, they meet them all, international requirement, yeah. You may must, uh, put them all infrastructure, believe me, or process, believe me, the standard. And, uh, peros standard, say me, uh, come through. Some previous, uh, portal, it's a making, some work, yeah, business, same before V C M P, or other study, the body. Where peros standard, say me, come, I mean, capture them, uh, most of function, yeah. And I mean, try and to block create them, uh, some, but. In short, you me got over twenty staff. Uh, you make three manager. One, he run them not in division, one, he run them laboratory, one, he run them standard and certification. And all staff, all staff, and main work, believe me, for since acti, uh, li established. I mean, blow look mainly, the standard, law, all food, commodity, we like export, mainly now cover. Also, I'm cover, I mean, now, them, only one them export. By security, collect them sample, he send them, I mean, laboratory, laboratory test them. And then, I mean, certify him, say, straight, the export, and then, by security, give him current lead, the export, and me, one, law, main work, we must take a moment. And also, law, la copora, that all inspect, I believe me, like inspect them standards, law, different level. More, I mean, law, work, we must make them, obviously, I mean, one new office, you must take us full, uh, study tourist, a transition yet. But mainly, since law last year, pen, law, say, I mean. Cancel them, say, if you mind, it, I mean, law, one more task, important task, same with T G, tell them small. But we think, say, through law, meeting, do you know, by me, say, explain them small, I think, there's small. Some are in move, the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. See you, long. Bless, I will give him brief overview, long, uh, you may long, Pirmo standard. You give him time, let it go.
Uh, honorable chairman, or the more honorable members, I think, every agency, where you stop, wonder, law ministry, only, only present, finish, you know, and. He'll come back, law discretion, more guidance, believe you, Mr. Chair, law next steps, blow, you may follow him, and we play prepare, law, respond, law, any questions, we vice, come and up, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, uh, T G, with them, all directors, more CEOs. Uh, little presentation, long, today, law morning, also, we've been tell them finish, uh, we meet, tell them, again, thank you, Thomas, long, report, we've less, I will give him two thousand twenty four report. You come long, uh, parliament, law, uh, committee, I mean, service, scrutinize him, report, yeah. Uh, after law, uh, several meetings, law committee, I mean, come up with them some, uh, issues, uh, based long, uh, report, long two thousand twenty four. And today, um, you make that opportunity, blow honorable members, so let's have a, uh, ask him some question, based two thousand twenty four report, as well as, uh. All, uh, questions, where they got beside, uh, plus, I ask him, law, you, um, T G, with them, all directors, more CEO. Um, so this time, we give him table, long honorable members, long, uh. Save a, uh, cut, uh, all the survey question, I mean, I suppose, any question, uh, establish the table. Thank you. Me give him first one, long honorable member, blow, um, F A T, role, honorable Fred Samuel.
T G, with them all directors, managers and also GM and CEOs, thank you so much for. Very brief, but meetings, I mean, comprehensive presentation about all various department, where you will, I manage them. And you will, I look at them every day, uh, behalf of committee, me, joining chairman, but I'm thank you, Thomas, law commitment, believe you, la. Probably this year and over the last few years, despite all challenges, where we face them, the COVID, uh. The tropical cyclones, the earthquake, the liquidation of ever not to, but, uh. You will remain firm, and you will, I commit them down, believe you, la, effort with them also, thank you, law team, believe you, la, to all staff. When we can show, see, me give him engine, the economy, believe Van Wato, I mean, continue, blow function, and I mean, everyone, he benefit them. Uh, T G, I got two question, you know, um, but chairman, I think, before me proceed, I ask him question, but I may declare him conflict, believe me. Um, maybe, before, I'm a member of parliament, maybe in work, law, as a consultant, on a hard talk basis, for the last five years, with the ministry, blow trade. Law, a few project, and secondly, I mean, uh, chairman, law Van Wato Tourism Office, I mean, one, uh, political chairman, believe me, law constituency, believe me, like F A T. Uh, T G, question, believe me, in relation to all projects, where we funded by E D F fund. We want them, suppose you save a briefly, no, give him detail, blow, I mean, la, all honorable members, blow committee. One in total amount of E D F fund, I mean, available, the government, I mean, utilize him, and the ministry, blow trade, trade. Um, I'm a project, you may been in back them. And just briefly, give him, we must have idea about all objective, all timeline and budget, and when I'm now, all current status, huh? I think that's the first question, and secondly, I mean, in relation to all projects, where come through, law aid for trade unit within ministry, yeah? And especially, your obvious, um, move, la, yeah, where, law report. And also, some information, we like gathering from other sources, this, this, some project have been delivered on time. And delivered successfully, so congratulations and well done, but our question is more on, um. All got a way, he got delay, uh, or only produce them incomplete, only completed, but only know. Deliver them every output, where you may expect them. Um, you, all members, blow committee, only understand, say, E D F eleven, I think, correct me, suppose me right. I mean, one of our biggest, uh, funding, finance, when we come, law, partners, believe me, overseas, and only come, blow, only supplement them. Recurring budget, believe me, believe me, blow, run them country, believe me. Um, and then, I'll develop question, believe me, T G. Thank you, Thomas, chairman.
Thank you, honorable member, long, uh, F A T, role. You may give him time, law, chap, um, T G.
Uh, thank you, uh, chairman, thank you, law, honorable member, law questions, will he come out? Especially, Los Side, blue E D F, and to law, aid for trade. Um, all individual programs, several program activities, so only run by, uh, department, believe me, law industries, with them to, same, you may, Har Emilia, law, GM, law. Uh, chamber, blow commerce, by me, with them permission, believe you, uh, Mr. Chairman, by me ask him, suppose, all. Directors, please me, more heads, will responsible, will assist, blow, uh, provide them all details, where, uh, response, law. Uh, question, where MP, I mean, uh, honorable member, blow house, I mean, raise him. Semak, law, blow aid for trade, you make that manager, blow famo, is tell you, please, yeah. With them permission, believe you, Mr. Chairman, by me ask him, blow, suppose, I miss, I will carry me, me through law, some law activities, where. Only, uh, funded under only, only stop inside, law program, law, uh, aid for trade, especially, law, uh, E S P support program. You make out two main, uh, two main, uh, headings, blow all activities, where the commander, law, uh, E S P program, no aid for trade, yeah. Uh, one, Los Side, blow trade in goods, one, Los Side, blow trade in services. And the goods, see, call law department, law industries, and two, law, uh, services, law department, law tourism. And they touch them to department, law cooperatives, we got all program activities, where. Uh, funding, it, I get them, and also, uh, honorable member, he, uh, he raise them. He got some, well, he implemented, finished, we call, call us, probably complete, especially, law V C C I, the chamber, law commerce. He got some, well, install a pipeline yet, I think, one big, la, issue, where, you need, believe me, I will, them, no more. Uh, release, law funds, yeah, only happen late, the first quarter, blue year, yeah. And just recently, also, uh, fancy issue, law funds, too, through law, uh, arrangements framework, waste up in place, with them, uh. Uh, development partners, please me, only part, law agreement, fully sign them with them government. Process, he must go through, and that, law, we hint him, no more, law committee. Uh, he must, uh, all approved projects, only, only run through, law, R F Q, same, you may say, request, law tenders from issue, law. Uh, central tenders board, uh, with them act, believe me, all R F Q, so it must be issued, and then, on selection panel, or decide on. Uh, process, he go through under law office, the prime minister, the, uh, Despac. And then, he go down, law finance, once he got some finance, only, uh, manage him, release, law funds, to please, yeah. Me say, I tell them, most of them, chairman, without looking at the list, uh. Call us up, would you make up about, uh, uh, seventy percent of the project, where he, only still stand, law, he implemented yet. Uh, a few, law, they implemented, and he got various reasons, blow delay. But by me ask him, with them permission, believe you, Mr. Chairman, by me ask him assistance, blow, all heads, blow agencies, where he stop, blow, he assist them, you mean, law. Uh, all, uh, the la main questions, where honorable member, I mean, ask him, was your right, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, um, T G, honorable members, may you give him time, law, eight agencies, please, I've come forward, long, given, law question, honorable member. Long, uh, F A T, role.
Thank you, thank you, chair, I think, by me, I tell them, well, I'm with, I think, T G, tell them, then, uh, the cooperative to be coming, yeah. E D F eleven, I mean, come on, it, the ministry, and, uh, he got one, I call them, industrial development fund. Where is that, with them, uh, starting the department, the industry, then, uh. Cooperative development fund, is, is there any law, law cooperative. I mean, been come, law two thousand twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, roll out, believe me, last day, I mean, no, I got any more fun, fun, I mean. Uh, I mean, finishing two thousand twenty three, yeah, I know, it divided, I mean, go to each provinces. Uh. You make at Malamba, Sanma, Tavia, and Seva, what they're topa. I think last one, I mean, lot of power, two thousand twenty three, blow it, the industrial development fund. Uh, funny, I mean, I mean, time, I'm sent them application, they got the full up applicant, so they apply come. And I reach province, then you make that one screening committee, we start, I mean, blow, I mean, select them, I got in the total amount, blow. Uh, fun, I mean, located, the reach province. And what they might even, the struggle, I mean, give you mouth, I think, by myself, more than sixty, sixty. Uh, manufacturers, where they apply, we make you more, they call it, uh, all of the province. And I got, uh, jump of commerce, same now, where, uh, you can put them, I mean, I mean, facilitate them all, all funny, yeah. Also, I mean, make them monitoring, blame. Uh, so, I tell you, I mean, pink, came out, one report, then. Where by, uh, thing, I'm, by me, I say, what them, uh, report, blow fun, by me, I say, what them, committee, yeah, by me, I say, my reporter, come. So, uh, CEO, plot, GM, blow, he's, he's, he's stopped. Uh, I mean, not them, believe me, I say, my, uh, information, again. So, this, I mean, I got any funding, by E D F, what they're my last year. Thank you.
Thank you, um, acting director, uh, giving time, law. Director, long, uh. Cooperative.
Thank you, thank you, chair, thank you. Uh, thank you, honorable member, a nice questions about E D F eleven fundings. Is I think, you mean, Harem, E D F eleven fundings, have you been come, believe me, law twenty twenty one, and I mean, law twenty twenty three. Uh, you may law cooperative, you've been cut one annual reports, lot of funding, we've been produced, law twenty twenty three. And after the meeting, I was, you, all members, we should have a fantasy, we will, what the will copies, so far. E D F eleven support funding, we come, believe me, law department, the industry, when we, I'm gonna, sorry, law department, law cooperative. Uh, first runs, where I mean, been coming, I mean, fifty four, fifty four million, fifty four million, I, you may help them, for not to cooperative business network, I have. And then, law year twenty twenty one. Twenty, uh, law twenty twenty one, and also, law year twenty twenty one, or two. Uh, you may been support them twenty one, apart from V C P N, you have been support them. Uh, twenty one active cooperatives, the new twenty twenty one. And by me, give me, like, one example, say, one, the example, time, minimum active, one, the example, say, I mean, for example, you may law, La Catoro consumer. La Catoro consumer, auto La Catoro, La Catoro consumer, funding, I mean, we've been using, blow, build them. Baker, me, La Catoro consumer, where today, I mean, produce one thousand five hundred per daily. Uh, daily, where I mean, supply, not only La Catoro, but I mean, cause far as, law areas, uh, around the Malacola. So, and then, one example, split that twenty one active cooperative, where you may been support them, or that. The year twenty twenty, uh, the year twenty twenty two, uh, unfortunately, E D F funding, I mean, have been spent, the year twenty twenty two. For some reasons. Uh, for some reasons, I mean, have been spent, believe me, and then, all budget, then, have been carried forward, and then, you may been spent them, the twenty twenty three. So, department, law, cooperative, you may be receiving one hundred million. And that millionaire, we've been coming, said, we support them, all cooperative. And you, and on seventy four cooperative, where you've been using that hundred million, believe me, revive them, or that, and I'll cooperative, yeah, establish strategic locations. And I'll strategic locations, and by, by province, you may be helping, or that, as, uh, or that, cooperative, believe you, I mean, been revive them, or that. You've been out of seventy four, you've been revive them, lot, uh, lot, uh, Dorba province, you may revive them, uh. Ten cooperatives, similarly, La Sanma, uh, Penama, uh, Malamba, Seva, and Tavia. La Sanma, Penama, Malamba, Seva, and Tafea, so you may got one total, law seventy four cooperative, where you may been support, the Moata, low revive, the Moata, all got the cooperative, where you been stop before, more straight after the independent, where they got all these struggle status, where you been sleep for so long, today, suppose you call the park, the islands, for me, by you look, you visit them, by you look, that will start all strategic locations, yeah, you may revive them, and you may revive, the Moata, from low more, say, policy, for me, I've been work, for me, last year, and you tell them, you may must revive them, you must start, by you comment, connect them, domestic trades, for me, so, policy, for me, too, I mean, also, look, look, the side, the connectivity, how now, you may save a connect them, and cooperatives, for me, blow, only save a corporate among each other, so, look, I'm back, honorable members, low year twenty twenty four, we will not got one E D F funding.
Thank you, director, law cooperative, T G.
Thank you, honorable chairman, with them permission, please, as me call upon director, law department, law tourism, recipient, more unofficial delivery, lots of services, so under law E D F, so, was he all right, Mr. Chairman, by me allow, I'm, blow, he give one brief response, law question, law honorable member, thank you.
Thank you, T G, honorable members, by me give him time, law, director, law tourism.
Thank you, chair, thank you, members, law side, for you, me, law department, law tourism, you've been receiving one funding support, about hundred and fifty million Vatu, where you may break them down, equal to three years, fifty million each year, from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three, out law funding support, yeah, I mean, we make a plant, refocus, la, I mean, equal to support, we provide them, equal to agri tourism operators, throughout all six provinces, yeah, based, I mean, under law governance mechanism, law E D F eleven, we took at one committee, Westing Committee, we have nine look, law funding support, yeah, and where now, you may save a direct money, under the agri tourism program, the department, the tourism, you may been selecting about five operators, law Tafea, two law San, seven law Sanma, two law Malamba, two law Penama, six law Shefa, then you may took at about four, law Torba, so, business operators, yeah, they been benefit, lots of low good energy facilities, also, solar fridge and solar power, where they been, blow help them, or get up, enhance them product, or get up, then you may also work under, what them, Vanuatu Bureau of Standards, where you may look, look, for side, how now, you may save a come up, put them on standard, agri tourism itself, also, where we want niche market, law tourism sector, where you may want them growing further, for enhance them sector, yeah, you need play also, I mean, got framework, play them, certification standard, play them, process, play them, so, part, I mean, I mean, been provide them at probably about twenty million Vatu support, where me call over, not to Bureau of Standards, where I will look, how now, you may save a to map establishing more standard, black agri tourism, I think, I miss still one ongoing work, law side, for me, law agri tourism, I mean, I've been also had taken some monitoring and evaluation, low, how now, impact, blow funding support, yeah, I mean, actually, may look him, say, at planned the tourism businesses, only make them diversific, diversifications, blow get up, unfortunately, I think, I mean, talem, also, same, it happened, I mean, one great program, I mean, happened, one time, where COVID nineteen, I mean, been hit, he make him, say, borders, for me, close, and tourism numbers, for me, me down, I mean, can full up tourism operators, I mean, been, first, I'm hard time, little bit, blow find them market, I mean, save a come, market, where for most of them come, law overseas, but me will I still maintain them program, yeah, with the ministry, black agriculture, I mean, try, I'm looking back, I mean, revamp them program, yeah, in partnership with them, some private stakeholders and NGOs, how now, you may save a look, say, you may unlock their full potential, agri tourism, low Vanuatu. Then you may talk about agri tourism, I mean, no specific, no more, law side, for nutrition, but I mean, also, look, law side, for food, food tourism and gastronomy, these are the types of elements, where tourists, time only come, low Vanuatu, the full up time, only indicate, little surveys, for me, say, I mean, I know, I mean, one, I'm look at that too, one, I'm come, like sport, I'm low Vanuatu, as part of the cultural moments and tourism moments, for you, we used to promote them, at the Vanuatu Tourism Office, thank you, Tomas, thank you, I mean, I know more.
Thank you, director, law tourism, you give him time, low T G.
Thank you, sir, law side, law second question, law honorable member, so, me understand him correctly, and me, law side, law aid for trade management, and me just want him, talem all same, say, with them information, to a manager, law officer, me, Kim, for me, and one, I'm, I mean, save a too, agreements, although, only been signed last year, implementation, blemah, it just taking place, law March, low year, yeah, all program activities, where list up under law funding, yeah, he divided law two, trading services, with them, law goods, and to some support, he come law office, corporate, of our services ministry, law ministry, especially targeted, law trade negotiations, but unfortunately, nothing happened last year, from issue, law earthquake, yeah, too, but implementation, let me just start, low year, yeah, with them all different process, where it must be cleared, law trade, equal to, law, for, law, Despac, and then, with them, you may low finance, but, Mr. Chairman, with them member, program, yeah, I mean, just start, play implement, law March, no more, low year, yeah, I mean, hope say, respond, semi satisfactory, law honorable member, we ask him, suppose nobody, I mean, try, I'm, clarify him little bit more, and we have people, I mean, I save a provide them, make them available, one spreadsheet, blow total funds, only, only been assigned, with them, all different detailed activities, only stop inside, law, on different services, yeah, law side, blue goods, more, law tourism, law side, blue services, with them cooperatives, too, and me, by me, I save a making, I mean, available, law committee, honorable committee, yeah, thank you, chairman.
Thank you, T G, long, let's have a response, with them respond, with them, narfla, director, law respond, believe, la question, blow, honorable member, blow F A T, honorable Fred Samuel, honorable members, T G, with them director, more, all CEOs, so, you may stop the day, low morning, look, sometime, for me, but by him, I save a permitting, me, me, belong, you may continue with them question, more, or respond, by you, me, T G, with them team, blue you, by you, me come back tomorrow, low morning, belong nine o'clock, sometime, also, you may come, day, day, low morning, for you, may continue with them question, the table, with them all responses, so, with them time, I mean, one, them talem, thank you, for me, everyone, especially, you may long ministry, for you, you may save a come, day, day, long morning, for you, you may give all submission, for you, me, all presentation, thank you, Tomas, long all directors, with them CEO, belong, save a give him overview, presentation, long, you may long, day, day, low morning, for honorable members, so, let's save a cut some insight, as to, we got all question, too, plus save a ask him, for me, but otherwise, thank you, Tomas, law, you may long, day, day, low morning, you may also, talem, thank you, law, online views, for you, save a follow me, me, long all presentation, more question, where me raise, day, day, low morning, so, by meeting, I mean, confirm back, and tomorrow, long nine o'clock, low morning, this time, we invite him, T G, director, with them CEO, belong, you may, all CEOs, we may save a kindly leave him room, thank you.
Thank you, sir.